Good evening. Welcome to the July 10th, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. First up on the agenda tonight is the consent docket. Counselors, any items you'd like to see removed from the consent docket?
Yes, please remove B and C.
B and C. Any other items? We've entertained a motion to approve the consent docket minus items B and C.
So moved.
With a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus items B and C, please vote. We vote a four to zero. The consent docket is approved. This time, we'll move to public comment on items not scheduled tonight for public hearing. We do have one person signed up to speak on, in fact, items B and C from the consent docket, Mr. Roger Ghosts.
Thank you, Roger Ghosts, 1120 East Cornell. I'm going to, I guess, jump ahead of what you guys are going to consider in a minute, but the, it basically looks like it's some budget approvals for Husband Street and Third Street Bridge. Please approve so the project can get finished. They got me digging into what's going on on those things. Husband Street Bridge is 72% over the original budget. And Third Street Bridge is 71% over the original budget from staff reports of November 5th to 2019. And it's just what the cost are doing in this industry. They're like 12 to 15% per year more. But I, I'd like to see us move projects faster through the system because we're eating up a lot of the tax dollars that we have. It's going to be less, less that we can do. The, every time we delay, it's, you know, 85% less money we've got and, and need to get the projects on the street and under contract. That's just what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. All right. That takes us to items removed from the consent docket, and I think we'll call up Candy Staring for item B. Do you have a report on the item?
Good evening, counselors and mayor. We do have slides for the bridge project on Husband. We don't have slides for Third Street, but we're ready to answer questions on any of those. Do you see it? I just want to say a few things before I pass this off to Andy Dorflinger, who's managing the Husband and Third Street Bridge projects right now. This, both of these projects started with the FY14 Bridge Maintenance Program, which probably was sometime in the middle of 2013 when those funds were coming out. And it was initially for three different elements of evaluation of various bridges across Stillwater. And by 2014, it had been determined that the cost to repair Husband was nearly as much as it was to replace it. And that was based on the bridge design and the ideas they had at the time, which was a box culvert. After 2014, there was a lot of changes that happened to concept, and there was never any funding to go through with it, so it didn't even come back to council until 2018. That's why our project number is a 19. So Andy takes on this project in sometime in 2022, when he fully started managing it, and that was after it had been managed by multiple people in the past. So the accounting system is a little bit tricky, and we've done our best to get a timeline for you all to see how much full authorization has been. And the amendments go all the way back because it started in 14. It's a very old contract, and we've done our best to itemize that. So Andy's done a bang-up job managing what he has. It's really taken an army on this project because both of these projects have had utility relocation issues, and those usually take a lot of people coming together to figure out the right answer in dealing with private and franchise utility owners that have their own agendas and their own schedules. And so that takes a lot for us to get them to move. On Third Street, it was three times. They had to move three times. So Andy's going to tell you all the timeline, and after that, we'll get up and we'll both be here to answer any questions that you all have on both projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. What I want to do first is kind of walk through the timeline of how these projects were authorized. So in September of 2013, it was identified that these bridges needed to be evaluated. There was a series of bridges in town that were included in the evaluation. The one that we knew for certain needed to be replaced was Third Street. And as part of the 2013 contracts, there was a preliminary evaluation. But then we also went through and looked at each of these six other bridges. One of them was Husband Street. And at that point, during that evaluation time, they determined that Husband needed to be replaced. So then in 2014, we came back and said, okay, it's cheaper or just as cost-effective to put it in a new bridge, and that's what we presented to council. And then in 2016, for both bridges, we identified right away that needed to be acquired, so we came back and asked for that. And then in 2018, we initiated the, basically funding, we got the funding to do the construction projects. It was let in January of 2022, and we came to council in February 2022 for the award of this project. Third was in March of 2022. And you can see, Husband came in under budget, so we were pretty excited about that. That allowed us to move some money to Third Street, which came in over budget. So we kind of balanced our books there, and that's what you see in March 2022. In the time between March and October, we discovered that there was the issue with rock not being in the elevation that we thought it was. So that triggered a redesign of the project. We advertised for the peers that were put in on Husband, and that's the 1.2 for 6 million. And today, we're here for $159,000 of additional authorization. So here's the totals without that additional authorization. Kind of shows it all summed together. And this is, again, this is just for Husband. So this additional, these additional expenses start off, there's additional testing. When the budget was established in 2018, we established a certain amount of money for testing. It's 2023 now, so costs have escalated to do those services. So, and these are very important things to make certain, like the concrete has the right strength, the materials are sufficient for the use in this bridge. In a similar way, for both, in both engineering contracts, we had identified specific inspections that they should come out and help us with. Again, there were more inspections to be done, so they, and those costs overrun, so that's why we're requesting more funding for that. Also, in both of these allocations, there is some additional contingency. We know that there's some outstanding claims as far as, from these contractors for the delays that have occurred on the projects. So we're working to, work with those through the change order process. So with this new request, the new total authorization would be 1.5. When you add in the peers, it'll be 3.027 million. So, all right, I'm ready for questions, so.
So we're on item B, so Husband Street, related to Husband Street Bridge. Counselors, questions of staff?
Yeah. So we've gone ahead and we're going to completion with this project, even though there is a potential claim outstanding because of the rocks and the peers and all that sort of thing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that, is that standard practice?
You know, there are, so this is a change of conditions situation. So yes, it is typical to continue the project. We did an evaluation back in August when this came up, and we said, okay, do we cancel the project, stop everything? Well, we didn't have a bridge, so there's a big hole in the ground, and we're like, how long would it take to go back and, and re-engineer it and re-let it? And those timelines extended even further than we are today. So we would have had to go through, depending on what option we took and how much evaluations, that was going to be a lot longer delay. At the time when we let that, we didn't understand that there would be, the utility relocation would take quite as long as we thought. But I still don't think that that delay is comparable to some of the analysis that would have been required to do the stream analysis and things to change the design.
Okay, so help with the utility relocation. Those are private utilities.
That's correct.
And so the city was not responsible for that cost, is that correct?
For the utility to relocate, no, we were not.
Right. And so, did that create a delay in the project?
It did.
How long a delay?
That's a good question to ask. It's all aggregated in with, with the delay associated with the drilled peers.
Okay.
So, and we probably, some of that stuff we need to wait on.
Yeah. When we let the project, we were opening bids in October, and we came in October. And AT&amp;T knew about the need to move in August, and they were out by February. That's six months. We told the second contract, though, that you won't start until they're out, so that notice to proceed was never given. So the reason there's a question is because of not, not the delay to the first start, but because there was equipment in the field for the first one. That's where there's a change order process that we're looking into to make a decision on that. Our ordinances give private and franchise utilities six months to clear the way. And there's, if Tammy Ewing was here tonight, she and I have been also going all through this for the reasons of private utilities, because when you have contracts and agreements with these folks, those matter too, and they all say something different.
Okay, so now the bottom line question, when is the sucker going to be done?
So if it stops raining...
Oh, no, no, come on, let's, let's...
I wish I could, I wish I, yeah, right now, the target is the first of school. I'm concerned right now because of all the weather delays we've had in the last few weeks that we may be pushing into August, but it'll be in August, is what our contractor says, and ideally before school starts, so.
Okay. So what other...
It's like the 10th of August.
I know. I, I have some concerns myself, just looking at things because of the rain. I mean, if it keeps on raining like this, we can't get the soils to be compactable, and it just holds us up, so it's terrible.
So it's hard to, I know it's a hard question to answer, but do you foresee anything else that is going to be in the way here? I mean, are we, are we far enough down the road that we're pretty clear on where we're going and how long it's going to take?
Yeah, we're pretty clear of where we're going. There, I mean, there's always something that can come up, so there's still digging, there's still building, so there's things that will come up. We do our best to work them out in the field as quickly as possible.
And I could ask the question, what's unforeseen, but you can't answer that. I don't expect you to answer that question.
I wish I could, oh, yeah. I wish I could, so.
Further questions on 3B? Would you like to take action on item 3B?
Yeah. Motion to approve CC 23-111. Authorizing increase of 159,000 for the Husband Street Bridge.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the recommended action on item 3B. Please vote. Vote a four to zero, that item's approved. Then item 3C is the Third Street Bridge. Is there any additional information you staff needs to share on that?
Yeah, pretty much, it's a similar situation with some delays because of, in this case, it was a utility that we had relocated and, or I shouldn't say we relocated, they paid to relocate it, but it was in the way of where we were going to drill our peers, and it had to be relocated twice. So it was, they put it in.
How does that, I mean, how does that...
I don't know.
How do they not know where we're building?
They, I don't have a good...
Is that a communication problem on our end?
No, I mean, it was, I went back through the emails. It was very explicit, you know, here's the 10-foot corridor for this utility. And I don't have a good explanation as to why, so they were directionally drilling, directionally drilling, you can make it bend, and they started their bend too soon, is what it came down to. So it wound up going into the corner of, just barely into one of our driven peers. It was outside, outside the drilled peers. The first time it was in the drilled peers, second time outside. So Kevin said their, their equipment lost communication during the construction, so they have a probe or some kind of magnetic thing that, that identifies where that drill head is and where that pipe's being pulled, and it got, and that didn't happen, so.
Next time, we just put the peers in and let them clean up there.
Unfortunately, I wish we could, but...
Until we hit a line and not have a town. And then, and then we take care of the utility relocation.
It's a very critical utility, and it's, it covers the whole downtown and the hospital, so.
Which utility was it?
It was...
Can you say?
Chickasha, or Chickasha. And then the Southern Link was also involved because they both shared that one route or conduit.
So I guess that was the fiber, probably?
Yeah, that's pretty critical.
So when is this project expected to be finished?
That one's supposed to be done on November 1st, so.
And further questions on 3C? Counselor Harden, would you like to take action?
Sure. Let's make a motion to approve CC 23-104, to raise the total to a new project authorization of $3.48 million.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero.
Can I make a quick comment? Thank you guys for coming, because when I knew this, and I was really struggling to try to understand what we're approving here at this point in time and, and where the claims lay for the geotech stuff. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 6 on the agenda, public hearings. Item 6A is to receive public comment regarding a request from Jared Fouts, Vertical Bridge, for a specific use permit to allow a cell tower at 1730 North Jardoe Road. This was tabled from our June 12th meeting. It's CC-23-103. Did we have good notice on this item?
Beth Ann Childs is here.
Thank you, Beth Ann. Jaclyn Porter.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jaclyn Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. As previously stated, this is a request for a telecommunication tower at 1730 North Jardoe Road. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located near the intersection of North Jardoe Road and East Brook Avenue. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. His locate, the location of the site is on the locked up self-storage to the west of Skyline East subdivision. Here's a zoning map of the, of the property. It is currently zoned Commercial General, Light Industrial is to the north, and Small Lot Single Family is to the south and west, and Large Lot Single Family is to the east. Here's a street view looking southwest across the intersection of North Jardoe Road and East Brook Avenue. Here's a site plan and the elevation of the proposed 160-foot telecommunication tower. Planning Commission tabled the SUP item in order to obtain additional information regarding the fall zone, wind speed load, and code requirements for towers proximity to residential zone property. The applicant has submitted a variance request for the code requirement for the towers required setback for residential zone properties. The applicants are here tonight to address any questions, concerns that you have before turning the floor over. Are there any questions for staff?
Was the fall zone requirement created before these poles that break above the middle that we hear so much about now? Is it, is it an old standard? That's what I'm asking.
Our, ours?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Ours is just typical as if it was one falling.
I don't think that was exactly the question. Is, is our code predate this new modern monopole design where it breaks in the middle?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that, I guess I'm, I'm confused about the order of operations here. Why are we even considering this without the variance having already been granted by, by the Board of Adjustment?
Because this is a use. This is kind of like a rezoning before you start developing, so this is coming forth to use, to allow them to do the use. So later on, I will do a recommendation to approve it with a condition for the approval by the BOA. That's for that variance, for that height, before they can pull a building permit.
So I guess it's an interesting question, just from, from a standpoint of what are, what are we being asked to consider here? I mean, is this, are we looking at a different question than the Board of Adjustment is going to be asked to look at? Or are we, I mean, are we just asking if we're okay with a cell tower generally in this area? I mean, I guess it's a...
Right. So communicate, telecommunication towers are required to have an SUP in a commercial zone district.
Okay. Beth Ann, from a legal perspective, are we, are there, I mean, I know there are certain reasons we are not allowed to decline to issue an SUP for a cell tower?
Well, in this particular case, because I, I've spent a lot of time refreshing my recollection of the FCC requirements and those sorts of things. I feel, you know, there are a couple of different ways that this could have progressed, but I, I believe that where you are right now, which is my recommendation, if you elect to move forward, would be to approve the specific use permit conditioned upon approval of the variance by the Board of Adjustment. And I had recommended that the Planning Commission add that recommendation on at the end of the meeting, because that way there's no, nothing left to chance. So if the Board of Adjustment declines to approve it, then it, then the specific use permit would not be.
But can we, for lack of a better word, usurp the Board's authority by saying, we don't want to approve it based on its failure to meet the, the variance requirement, or because it doesn't meet the zoning requirement in terms of fall zone? Like, is that even a question we get to, to answer?
Well, I, I think that...
For the rest of you, maybe, that don't care about the technical, the technical aspects of zoning law and all this stuff, I just don't know if that's a question we get to answer or not. I mean, can we deny it just based on that, or are we supposed to leave that to the Board of Adjustment?
Well, you, you probably could, but I, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to hem and haw over this, because, I mean, the problem is that it, it's a cell tower, and, and that really does add a significant layer of complexity to this, because there are certain shot clock regulations and requirements. And I think that the, the Telecommunications Act does vest municipalities with broad discretion to make a determination as to placement. But I think that when, when this all initially began, the thought was that the Board of Adjustment would have the ability, the legal ability to, to grant the variance. And so I suppose if we could wipe the board clean and start over, it is something that the City Council could use as a basis for denial, because very simply put, it, it, it doesn't meet the code. But I think that, yes, I think you do possess the legal ability to proceed this way.
That answers my question.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
Counselors, any other questions for staff?
I'm still kind of confused on this one. So if we denied it tonight, and I'm, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it could still go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance, correct?
It, it could, but then we would probably have to start the process all over again, like with new notice. So to reconsider the specific use permit.
Yeah, because they have to have the variance and the SUP.
They do.
You can't do it with just one or the other.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
And what would, with the new types of towers and where they break and such, how much space do they claim they need to be safe in terms of space from the residential area?
If I recall right, they predicted this one to be 64 feet diameter around the tower site.
Diameter or radius? They're here, so we can...
Radius, yeah. I was like, I was like, that's not right when I said it.
All right, thank you. All right. I mowed over before I asked clarification, so. We, any more other questions for staff at this point? Okay. At this point, I will, I will open the public hearing. I understand we do have a representative from the owner. Do you have any particular comments or just here for questions?
I'm just here for questions and be happy to make a quick statement.
If you could just introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, council members. I appreciate your time this evening. My name is Jared Fouts, and I live at 4714 West 80th Street in Prairie Village, Kansas, and I am here tonight on behalf of Vertical Bridge and T-Mobile to ask the council for the approval of the specific use permission, permit for the tower at 1730 North Jardoe Road. The, just make a couple of quick statements here. The proposed tower will provide T-Mobile as well as other potential future tenants with the vertical infrastructure required to provide dependable 4G, 5G, and wireless broadband coverage. It will also play an important role in T-Mobile's future network needs in that area. This technology is critical to ensuring that local businesses, schools, and households remain competitive. Dependable coverage in this area is also important in ensuring T-Mobile customers in that area will have reliable 911 coverage as well. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up.
Counselors, any questions? Sir, if, if I could ask you just a couple of quick ones. I mean, I assume you prefer building towers in locations that you don't have to go through and get variances for. Is there, is there a reason that this specific location is, is worth the trouble?
Yeah, we actually started this project a couple of years ago. We looked at a variety of areas. We probably looked at, I'm just going on memory here, but maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 locations. This one was, as I recall, on the, the very outskirts of the area where we needed to be, and it was, it was really the last option, I think is what it boils down to. So we did, and we, and one thing that I do, and I've been doing this for a while, going on 17 years now, I've done a lot of projects in a lot of jurisdictions, and the first thing I always do is look at the ordinance, find out, you know, where something like this is going to best fit in. And I think at the end of the day, you do your best to find those commercial and industrial areas, because that's where the use fits in better. Obviously, it's a tower, you know, it, it is what it is. It's, it's required for the coverage. But I think at the end of the day, I, I've seen a lot of these projects on storage facility properties, and they just tend to work well with that type of property. Hopefully, that answers...
But you run propagation maps and all that sort of thing to try to figure out is this...
Yeah, T-Mobile does, actually. T-Mobile, they have RF engineers who, who do that, and he was actually here for the planning meetings, the both planning meetings, but is not here tonight. But yes, he did propagation maps. Those were provided to the city, and, and it is definitely providing enhanced coverage, improved coverage in that area, surrounding areas. There's a lot of residential in and around there, as you could see, and it's, it's going to, to help the coverage for T-Mobile customers in that area.
Thank you.
Is the 110% setback strictly because of the potential of the tower blowing over, falling, splitting? It doesn't have anything to do with health-related issues with cell towers?
That is my understanding and the intent of the code.
Okay.
Any further questions?
a lot of residential in and around there, as you could see, and it's going to help the coverage for T-Mobile customers in that area.
Thank you.
Is the 110% setback strictly because of the potential of the tower blowing over, falling, splitting? It doesn't have anything to do with health-related issues with cell towers?
That is my understanding of the intent of the code.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Fouts? Thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up for the public hearing. Is anyone else here to speak at this public hearing? All right, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Jaclyn, what is the Planning Commission's recommendation here?
Okay, so Planning Commission's recommendation was approval with a vote of three to zero for the SUP conditional upon the Board of Adjustment approval for the variance request for Section 231131I1.
Okay, one more question from me. What, who has noticed on the variance hearing before the Board of Adjustment? Will the adjoining landowners, is there a radius that...
Yes, it's 300-foot radius of the subject property, so it's going to be the whole portion.
So it'll catch all those people who would be...
Yep.
And there's a Board of Adjustment meeting this week, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it on that?
It is not on that agenda, unfortunately.
Okay. Counselors, anything further? Questions, comments, action on the item?
We have to approve item 6A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item.
Beth Anne jumped up. It's already in the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommended motion of approval with the condition on the Board of Adjustment. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's see. Item seven, general order 7A, is the Stillwater Area Sports Association Annual Report from Carolyn Wallstead.
But I don't see it. It's not listed on the bottom here. I don't know how to get out of this one. Is that right? Nope.
Murphy's Law.
It's there. Barbara downloaded it.
There's a joke here somewhere. I don't exactly know what it is, though.
I would have never found it where it was. Sorry for that. Good evening. I'm Carolyn Wallstead.
Carolyn, pull your mic down a little closer.
Yes. How come it's not showing up? How come it's... Oh, there it is. Perfect. I'm Carolyn Wallstead. I'm Executive Director of SASSA Stillwater Area Sports Association, so thank you for allowing me to come and give my annual report. Ball fields. We handle our leagues for the, so we handle K-ball, T-ball, softball, baseball, flag football, youth basketball for youth. And for adult, I have adult volleyball and adult softball. So here's my league current numbers for 2023. Every night, we have somebody in the parks, except Wednesday. So I'll let you kind of look over those numbers. We have added evening hours for the pickleball, because pickleball in the SASSA gym has been such a high demand. So we have pickleball reserved in the SASSA Armory Gym from nine to 12, and then I have it on Thursday evenings from five to eight, and Sunday afternoons from two to four. And they are there. Have adult softball. Actually, tonight, we have adult softball men's league beginning. I have 12 teams playing out at Airport. So this is our league participation, just shows from where we began in 2013 to where we currently are in 2023. And SASSA offered 205 youth participants, either a full, I don't know what happened to my C there, full, reduced, or completely sponsored registrations. We have senior league that plays on Tuesday nights. I have three seasons of adult volleyball. We have women's in Spike, and that is the new floor in the SASSA Armory Gym. This is a typical evening at Strickland Park, but Babcock looks exactly the same. That's Monday. We play in the parks Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday for our leagues. And we have spring K-ball, T-ball, softball, baseball, and then fall K-ball, T-ball, softball, baseball, so. And then flag football's offered in the fall. So here's our gross income for last year, and that is with the 2016 partnership with the City of Stillwater for management and of the youth fields. Here's our tournament information. So we've had a lot of activity, and I just want to stress again that if you build it, I promise they will come. So we've had volleyball that I use, the OSU Calvin Annex, and we had 17 teams. That's kind of an, that's, we've done it for two years now. We have the third on the books. And we did have one full tournament that was rained out, and then we had one tournament that we had to cancel three divisions and only played at Strickland, because that was the only field that was playable. So our numbers would have been much higher. We do have a great partnership with the city, with Stillwater Public Schools. We host several of the junior high softball games at Babcock in the fall. And that's my partnership with the SPS. In the spring, we do use Little Couch softball fields, especially when we have weather issues. It's a great win-win for SASSA and also for Stillwater Public Schools, because people that typically haven't been to the high school for any athletics are there for K-ball, T-ball, and so they see the facilities. So it makes it nice. We will be using Little Couch in the spring, and each K-ball and T-ball will have one game at Little Couch, so that they can play on turf. We have pickleball in the gym, and, sorry, I kind of got ahead of my slide there. And this is our baseball tournament totals. We are down from last year a little bit, and again, it's because one whole tournament was canceled, and then one whole field. But that's still pretty impressive, that 3,100 participants. Community service and involvement, SASSA had over 380 volunteer coaches through all of our seasons, with hundreds of hours of community dedication. And this one's just kind of overwhelming, if you look at that, but it's the total participants with the number of games and the number of weeks of the season. If you think of that, I'm kind of a party planner for that many events per sport. So, and here is a picture of our volleyball ratings. Clinic, tournament that we did. And this is from the economic impact, and these numbers were given to me, Marmaratio was given to me by Visit Stillwater. And it is on the low end, because it's hard to exactly estimate how many are coming in, how many are spending the nights. But anticipation, visitors spending as they come in, I had 244 teams participating, and the estimated sales tax is $60,000. And I think that SASSA does a great representation for City of Stillwater hosting our tournaments.
And that's just baseball tournaments?
That's just baseball tournaments. That is correct. So if I have more fields, more will come. We do have a great partnership with Oklahoma State also. SASSA teams participate in the Cowgirl game, the men's. I have OSU tennis players as our instructors for our tennis lessons. We have discount baseball tickets. We try and partner two of our tournaments with the OSU baseball team, so that the teams can get discounted tickets. And Coach Holliday really likes it when we have our tournaments. It packs the field for sure. And we are hosting some NIL camps on the field for the summer for our OSU football players. So here's our capital investment, pretty much. We did have a break-in this year, which is one of our first ones, and they took our generator, all of our blowers, our weed eaters. It was out at Wittenberg. We have installed more lights and, but it's a tin building that's fabricated, and they actually removed the screws and went through the back door. Pretty hard to detect. But we've been very fortunate and lucky. I do have AEDs that are on order, so we'll have an AED in each park when we have events going on. We've updated the bullpen at Babcock, replaced shade structure due to this wonderful Oklahoma wind, portable mounds, so that we have some flexibility for our tournaments. Here's our tennis lessons. That was session one. We have three sessions, and when it's inclement weather, we bring them inside and use the Armory Gym. Pickleballers aren't real happy, but they understand it's only an hour and a half, and, you know, it's hard to tell an eight-year-old that they have to go out in the rain and play tennis with lightning.
It's hard to tell the pickleballers that, too.
Oh, I'm not popular. I'm not popular when those, when they see rain, they get mad at me that it's raining, not that. But some of our plans of improvement, I really need some shade structure out at Wittenberg. It is so hot. There is not any shade structure. So that's what the picture is at the bottom. You can kind of see we, everybody brings their shades in, their OSU tents, or, I mean, their tailgate tents. But that is probably the one negative that I hear the most from our tournaments, is there's no shade. And it's hot up there. There's no air. We are hoping to host a football tournament. We have done field improvements at all parks. Then we'll have our five baseball tournaments. We'll hope to hope it's two softball. We had one this year. We're hosting an adult softball tournament. We've already had that. We're going to do another co-ed. And then we'll also have our adult volleyball. I just love this picture. Sorry I used it last time, but I just think that's a beautiful picture of our parks. And we do host Special Olympics, partnered with the City of Stillwater, out at Airport, fields one, two, four, and five. And it's growing. It's growing. It's coming back to where it was prior to COVID. And full support of my board. I appreciate them very much. And I'm out.
Thank you, Carolyn. Counselors, any questions?
I would just like to thank you for the presentation and the information, and just for all the work you do with the Stillwater Sports Authority, or Sports Association, excuse me. And just say, I think it's so important for both adults and children, one, to get the physical activity and to have those opportunities, and also just the things that come with being on a team and playing a sport. And so I thank you for all you do, and for the whole group, and thank you for all the information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all letting my one team come and do the pledge of allegiance and be honored. That was the big talk. So I'm, I hate to say, but you may have started something. I've already had coaches call and say, "When we sign up in the fall, how do we get to go to council?" So I'll be presenting.
Some spontaneous act of service.
Yes, exactly. Right. And they worked well. But again, I appreciate your support, and I just want to give that plug again, that if you build it, I promise that I can fill the numbers. We can host softball and baseball, and excited to work with soccer and their new plans together. And so thank you for your support. Any questions?
You mentioned soccer. Tell me more about that. Because we've got, we have some new soccer fields coming.
We do have new soccer fields, and we are working together, so SASSA can help with the soccer organization, with maintenance and contract, and we're in negotiations.
Okay. So you're talking?
Yes, absolutely. Talking, yes. And it's a great thing for the City of Stillwater. Any other questions?
Looks like it. Thanks, Carolyn.
See you in a year. Thank you.
We're going to do what we can to get you more space. I promise. Item 7B, we have a presentation on the design process for the new Stillwater Regional Airport Terminal project, and Connie McFarland is going to present that. After we have another powwow at the podium.
Gary found it earlier, so I'm making him find it again.
Gary Johnson, Interim Director, Stillwater Regional Airport, and Connie McFarland is going to give you an excellent update on the design, the 30% design of the new terminal for Stillwater Regional Airport. And this is going to be exciting, as well as the last report was exciting.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, everyone. I'd say buckle your seat belts, because we're getting ready to take off, to present for you what we've been working on for a while. Very excited to be here, because of the vision of this City Council, because of the vision to have commercial air travel, and because of the vision of the people who are at the airport, helping us every day make this airport be a good thing. We're pleased this evening to show you where we are in our design. So back in 2015, we got the good news that there would be commercial air travel from American Airlines landing in September at the airport, and we were selected in March from a group of other architects. That isn't very much time to make a terminal that's not being used for commercial air travel to be ready, but we jumped right in. We had the promise of a delivery in the fall, and so what we used was a system called Construction Management at Risk, so we could get the guy in early and start helping us figure out what we need to do and what it would cost. I'm going to slow down a little bit. So we had Meaden Hunt, who has been working through Bernard Dunkelberg, by the way, members of our team have been at the airport for over 30 years, so we know where everything is. But Meaden Hunt, who were the planners on our team, they helped us decide how to repurpose the airport. And so, let's see if that moves it forward. No, I'll go there. So here we are. They helped us how to repurpose this building that was built in 1952, to make it be ready for an American Airlines flight. That would mean TSA. That is not easy. There's a lot of people that work at TSA and a lot of people to talk to. But we basically, is it not up?
It's not all the way up.
Thank you, Andy. I'm looking at it. It's up on mine. So basically, we had the ability to take that building and add on two modular buildings, and if you fly out of there, you know what I'm talking about, temporary buildings. One would be used by TSA, and one would be used by a hold room to hold the passengers until the planes arrived. Interestingly, designed for 50 people, because at that time, American Airlines was bringing in 50 passenger planes. They don't fly those anymore out of DFW. So now we have a larger plane that's already started landing, meaning there's not adequate room right now for people in the hold room. Also, the TSA was sized, kind of a squashed-in, a temporary building for the 50-person flight, and that's in our past now. We worked to, I guess I go that way. Yeah. So here's the aerial view. So we added on the temporary building, and in 2015, we kind of planned to build a terminal using part of the existing terminals. The pointer working up there? No, it's working here. Well, to the north of the existing terminal, we had planned to build the hold rooms for, take the place of those, as well as TSA. And we also decided that, at that time, we did what's called an environmental assessment to clear that land, which just means clear the land. We're going to build on it someday. And that was all approved back in 2015. And then between 2015 and 2021, we met frequently, trying to make sure we had our arms around what's happening in the airline industry, as well as what might be happening at Stillwater, so we could make sure and have everything sized correctly. Then, in 2021 November, we were excited to hear that the bipartisan infrastructure legislation had passed, and Stillwater, being with an architect and with a floor plan, was kind of identified by the FAA as being a really good, almost shovel-ready project. And so we were asked to begin, and we did. And the funding is the key. FAA is bringing the money, and the leadership that you guys have shown in the past to help match when you must, makes that really be a successful story for your community. So we had a Task Six, which is a funny name for our contract, but if you've seen parts of it as it's come through last year, we're doing a Task Six right now, which means a new terminal, and we're excited about that. In 2022, also in early February, we decided that the air traffic control tower did not meet current standards. Finish floor was too low, bad sight lines. It had to be something improved on that, and that was good. And that's when we started building our team. We brought in William E. Payne from Colorado, noted national expert on towers. We also included InterVistas, which is our company that helps us do passenger terminal programming. The number one thing we wanted to do was make this be the right size for your community. We weren't doing a DFW nor Denver. We wanted it to be just the right size for your planes, for your community. And I think that was really beneficial. We also have LBR is our Civils Local, and then Park Hill, which is a national engineering architecture firm. They're doing all of our mechanical systems. And then I can't forget Wallace Design Collective. They're a structural quick, that's a little commercial for my team. But this is a big team. I mean, we have about... I mean, we have about 20 or 25 people working on the project to get it to 30% where we are tonight. In 2022, we, when we learned that the tower wasn't going to be helpful, we were asked to do by the FAA, a sighting study for the air traffic control tower. So last year and through this year, and just as of last month, we worked with the FAA doing what's called a sighting with virtual reality cameras. Talk about a fun day. Gary and I watched them all day, show us what it would look like if you're standing on top of a tower on the west side of the field. We have that identified now. We have the site. We're waiting on the final report. Should be November, moving at the normal pace of the FAA. But the site is selected and we've seen preliminary studies of that. And again, what we're talking about today is the master plan, what it becomes as a new terminal. In the middle of the, of the Meeden Hunt master plan, it's all working at the same time, tower study, master plan, and the architecture. We realized that the existing, we did an existing building evaluation and the existing terminal had skin, has to be reskinned, has to have new windows, is made of concrete blocks, so it's not really very flexible for a lot of changes like we needed. And we found at the same time that we really needed a little more square footage because it had been seven years since we programmed. Based upon the Meeden Hunt master plan, which is planning for the year 2050, it sounds kind of scary, but I'm going to be alive then. I did the calculation for tonight. So we got to get it right. We, we really didn't have adequate space. And the lot, we went through three different options. I was a stakeholder on the, on the master plan committee. I'm not actually, that was a Meeden Hunt contract. But the bottom line was we didn't, it didn't work very well there what we planned. And so we began to look at Hangar One site. And this is showing the master plan drawing with the plane that's flying in for American Airlines as well as room for 737, which will bring in your charters for your, all your football teams that are visiting as well as your team flying away. So we are, we're now on our way to design this building. And we have visited multiple terminals, but in particular Manhattan, Kansas, which I think is funny because Representative, your, your local Trish Ranson said Manhattan, New York during the vision meeting, we said, no, no, Manhattan, Kansas. We visited Manhattan, very similar in size, as well as Payne Field, which is located in Everett, Washington, very similar in size. We got the understanding of the flow. You come in the front door, you get your ticket, you set for a while to get through the line to go through the heart of the building, which is the checkpoint for TSA. And then you end up back in the hold room where you hang out for the 10 minutes before you depart here at this airport, because we've learned that you have a, really a lot of people know that it doesn't take long to get through security. But in 2050, you don't exactly know what's going to happen. And once you get off the plane, once you've made your trip and return, you come back down to baggage, which is what's shown on the left. You grab your bags and head right out. We know the number one complaint is how long it takes to get your bag. And that's because you only walk about 25 steps and there you buy your bag. So we're looking at creative ways to keep people occupied while they're waiting on the, on the bag to deliver. I'm sorry, it seemed to lose my breath, Mike. Oh, there it is. Red Dirt, that's our theme. In our vision meeting, we had a great group of mixed communities. We had OSU people, we had industry from local, and we came up with the idea of, it was actually Representative Ranson's, Red Dirt. That was our theme. So that helped us make decisions from there to the very time you move in. We're trying to represent the earth, the red earth, the indigenous earth that's here. But we also wanted to talk about the, the inside, maybe some Red Dirt music playing as people are trying to decide where their bags are. There's all kinds of things you can take a Red Dirt theme into all directions. This, this particular design allows you to move quickly through, but we're letting in so much light and everybody's going to really enjoy the opportunity to, to walk through the building. We're going to walk around the building right now. We're on the north side of the building. See the jet bridge is starting over there on the right. That, there, there is a photograph in the administration office of the airport that is a, is a Sessa 172, which is, we did that Flight Training Center, so we know a lot about that little plane. But that wing form is coming off of the feeling of flight. And then, of course, we have the Red Dirt color of the earth, which is, you know, basically clay with some iron in it. We do use that, a different color for the, for the more utility functions, just to simplify. Here we are on the view, actually, if you're standing out in the middle of the apron looking back, the first three windows on the left are the hold room and the one on the right is your charter lounge. That's actually your growth space. 2050, you only need two gates, but we're getting them now while we can, and we're going to use that one for what's really called a non-secure, but it can, we can make it secure at some point whenever we can. And then here we are, going to walk around the south of the building. Now we've gotten in our car and we're driving away. Please notice all the extra people that'll be flying in and out of there now. You won't, probably won't see them until we get done, but that's what we love is all the people spinning around. Here we are. We've arrived inside. Now we're checking our bag. We're getting our ticket there by the American Airlines ticket. On the backside of that window wall, when you're walking in, is an inclusivity area, which is an area for, it's a fuselage of a plane. So if you're nervous about flying, first time flying, it's kind of scary, you can go sit in the plane and get a feeling of how much room you might have and how it might feel. And then, isn't that fun? Or not have, right. The, behind the kind of textured, that's where checkpoint is. And again, we have interior designers that are just doing a bang-up job. That's the baggage handling. You can see there's a direct line for all those people that don't check their bags. And then we have the baggage handling system designed for luggage for 2050. It's not easy to add on to those and they have like a very long lifetime. There's the holder, and that's where most people will just be sitting and enjoying their coffee or whatever they're imbibing. There is a concession stand on both sides. There's a mother's nursing room. There's a wellness room for people that just need to calm down, particularly with your Special Olympics traffic in and out. There's a lot of need to just have a quiet spot. We have one on both sides. Basically, there's a little tiny security office, but it's, it's, the building is 31,000, I think it's 275 square feet. And I mean, it's right exactly on the program that was programmed by the Meeden Hunt, by pure passenger growth, 40% growth in passengers travel. So, oh, I can't miss this. There's lease space. That really matters if you're looking at revenue. We've got the concessions that we spoke of, and in fact, the TSA space and the American Airlines space. You'll see as you come through those stanchions, space on the right is American Airlines, but there's growth for a second airline, which is, and there's also growth for a second secure coming through checkpoint. So you've got everything you need in exactly this square footage you won't have to add on. The worst concern when we came out of programming that we might need to add on another hold room, we have it all there right now. And that's the best thing. You can move in and get to, you know, get to growing your air traffic and doing it all in the same space you built. So there's a service animal relief area. I can't, no, I can't leave that out. It's called a Sarah. And if you travel, everyone's got a dog or two dogs or three cats as they're flying nowadays, and we have it on the secure side, just to alleviate the lines and going through the checkpoint with animals. But it is a, actually an FAA requirement with very strict guidelines. They'll be green, I believe it's green, it was last time we saw it, astroturf that dogs will do their thing on, which I don't quite understand, but they say it works. We're going to bring some dogs out and test it out before we do it. So anyway, so the building really goes, really talks about sports, and it really talks about agriculture, and we believe it talks about this part of Oklahoma. It's not just an arbitrary, could put it anywhere, it's, it's here. It's Stillwater. And we have finished the environmental assessment. Because the building now is in Hangar, Hangar One slot, we had to do a little bit more EA. You actually might remember approving that back in December, November. It was just a, a refresh of what we did in 2015. But it's now a parking lot. You see it up there right north, I mean, sorry, right east of where the future terminal building is. That's the part we have cleared. Now you'd wonder why we couldn't clear anything else, but Hargus Drive has really kind of tied a lot of that up. And that, when, once that gets through and gets cleared, there'll be more available land back closer to the terminal, which by the way, parking for 2050 is planned in the other master plan. It's planned into this one, but the, the amount that we're showing there now is what's required, the opening of the facility. Timeline, we've been, we've been trying to figure out what it costs and how long it'll take to build for about a year and a half. And now we are ready to finish up our drawings. We're a third of the way through. We're ready to hire CMAR. We would like their help for helping us get the pricing correct right now rather than waiting. And we also see a two-year construction time. So we're hopeful that we can begin construction next spring and move in summer 2026. And we'll be, we, our commitment is to help City of Stillwater buy the bridge. You guys will bid the bridge, baggage handling, everything's really expensive. And also furniture, where our, our contract includes all the furniture, which will go with the Red Dirt theme as well. This lower portion is the air traffic control tower. Of course, you can't do anything until you finish that, get that final report on where it's going to be. But there is some talk that we should go ahead and start the EA. So that one is shovel-ready, just like this one is. So it's, it's been our privilege to work for you and, and your leadership to get to this point is really admirable. And FAA wants to help build, as we understand, they want to help build this building. And we would very much like to see this become a real 3D. And now you can unbuckle your seat belts and move around the cabin. Any comments, questions?
Will you go back to the little, little timeline?
You bet.
Start real quick. So I'm so sorry, I can't read any of the words, but you said the air traffic control tower is the part at the bottom?
Yes, ma'am. See, it says ATCT development. So there's a, so you see the green line that's right in the middle?
Yep.
One of it is scoping. You know, to do an EA, the first thing you have to do is determine where it is, what it is, how big it is, and scope what it's going to become. Then you get the pricing for what it costs. And then it takes a year. I mean, it was a miracle that we got our EA refreshed in the timeline in which we did. I mean, I, I don't really know how we did, but maybe it's a lot of prayer, I'm not sure. But we did get it done right about the time we finished our 30% drawings, which it could have been a real snag for us, but it was not.
So, so it looks like on this that the timeline of the air traffic control tower is roughly the same.
Yes. But that's if you get funding for the, that's not it. Yeah. Air traffic control tower, there were one project in February 2022, but they got separated and now they're two separate. Today, the only thing we have 30% complete is the terminal.
Okay.
Did I go too fast? Did I go too fast?
Not at all.
You know, I'm from western Oklahoma, but I talk really fast. I don't know how that happens. Any questions?
Counselors, for the questions?
I've got some.
Good.
So parking, pay parking?
Not paid yet.
Thank you. Okay.
You know, I hear people fly, fly Stillwater because of that.
You sort of costs, right? Okay. Just keep that in mind.
No, there isn't. In truth, we, we don't intend for it to be paid parking to begin with, but if you transfer it to be paid parking, then you have to pay back prorated amounts for the parking. But we're going in with all free parking.
But the design could be converted to pay easily?
100%.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The TSA here has a difficult time because they don't have the modern x-ray machines and all that. They will all fit in the, in the new space?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Our InterVistas group, that's our programming group, our national, the gentleman that's our lead used to work with TSA. So he can know the model numbers by heart, and yes, that will fit.
Hangar One, what's going to happen to them?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, obviously they have to move, because we're going to be putting a terminal on their spot.
So I'm new on council. I didn't know if that'd been addressed or not. Any, anything about Hangar, Hangar One?
Yeah, Melissa can give an update on that.
So we have been very concerned about Hangar One, and Gary and I are looking at places to get them relocated. They will not leave the airport. We're just going to relocate them at this point.
My, my last question.
Okay.
The air traffic controls tower, access road is, that's going to be on the west side of the airport.
Yes, sir. That's our plan currently.
Do we need to have something done for access over there?
Sir, it's all been planned into the pricing, and yes, we've been talking to city engineers as well as, LBR's been helping us with understanding the costs of the access roads.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the questions. I love to answer questions. It makes me test my knowledge. No more? Oh, I'm disappointed.
Don't worry, we'll, there's a long way to go on this one.
Okay. Mayor, I like that. Am I, you want me to sit down?
Well, it's, I, I do want to say, you know, I'm a big fan of the design.
Thank you. I love that.
First time I've seen those pictures.
Thank you. I love that.
And certainly the Red Dirt thematics fit, and it, it would be a, something I think we could be proud of in the community.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to see where it's going.
Thank you, sir.
And there's a, there's certainly a long way to go and a lot more to talk about, but appreciate the work that you and your team have done so far.
Thank you. We're very proud of it. It's one of the few buildings, again, I'm, my firm is 33 years old here in a couple of months. It's one of the few buildings I've done that like people just, that aren't really on the design team, but just see me out at the airport go, oh, I love the design. I mean, it's like I'm a rock star. I didn't even design it. My team designed it, but I helped, I helped put the surgical touch on what the theme should be, so. And I do think we should get the Red Dirt Rangers plank for the ribbon cutting. That's just my suggestion. And I have Tom Cooper's email. I mean, is that his name? Anyway.
I think Garth.
No, I don't know about Garth. He's a million dollars, I know. Any other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That will move us to item C, which is consider approval of amendments to the professional services agreement with McFarland Architects for design services. Melissa?
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager. This is mine. There we go. So Connie gave you a really great presentation of the history of where, where we are, how we got to today. I did develop some slides, but I think Connie hit all the highlights. One thing to point out is that we're very pleased that FAA has, has partnered with Stillwater Regional Airport and City of Stillwater on the construction of both of these projects. And they have developed a funding, a five-year funding plan, which is on the federal fiscal year. And just to remind you, that federal fiscal year begins October 1 every year. And they add, and just so that you understand, the airport master plan needed to, to happen to help us cite and locate both of these structures. We did employ a study committee for the master plan, and it was comprised of residents and stakeholders. So there has been a lot of public input that has gone into these developments. And again, as Connie stated, the Meeden Hunt was the contractor on that master plan, and it is a 20-year blueprint for the layout of the airport. The master plan did determine that a new terminal and tower, and we refer to that as an ATCT, is needed to meet the future needs of, of aviation and the expected growth out at the airport. Currently, the tower that we have, which was, it was originally a watchtower back during World War II. It was never really designed as a control tower. It doesn't meet the FAA standards, and so that's why the need to replace that as well as the terminal. Prior action by council was to approve a beginning contract with McFarland Architects, just shy of a million dollars, and that was funded with a first tranche of a bill grant. So the bipartisan infrastructure grants. And we are, as Connie said, we're to 30% design, and I hope you are as excited about that design as when I first saw it, it was just stunning. So now to the hard part, what does it cost to, to build stunning out there at the airport? And again, bear in mind that we're at 30% design. These, I can't red herring this enough for you all, this is estimated cost based on what we know now. As we start through the process of completing the design and we get the C Mar onboard, these costs are going to get refined over time. But construction costs at about 16.1 million, parking and access road at 1.8 million. We do have a $2.1 million contingency built in, and based on some of the projects that we've talked about this evening, you can see the need for that, that contingency. The boarding bridge, which I've heard a lot, or often referred to as a jet bridge from other pilots and passengers, is $1.5 million. And I thought it would be hydraulic in nature, it's, it's not. Our, our staff gets out and pushes and pulls it, which I thought was interesting, I thought it would be hydraulic.
For a million and a half, it doesn't move itself?
It doesn't move itself, does it Connie?
Nope.
The baggage handling system is going to be a great, it's a, it's an oval, isn't it Connie?
Yes, actually a hot dog.
A hot, okay, a hot dog, long, but it, it continually moves the baggage, so we will be.
Nobody has to push it?
Nobody has to push it. People do have, still have to load the luggage onto the, the carousel. Furniture fixtures and equipment, 780,000, and then I've got architect, engineering, and fees here of about 2.3 million. Right now, we're at $26 million for this terminal. So the next question I think you would ask is, where are we getting this money from? Well, this is, and I know this is hard to read, so sorry.
Melissa, just, I'm, so we're, we're talking about the, the architect contract at this point in the agenda. We're not approving any of these costs or talking about it.
No.
I just want to make sure what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I'm just giving you some background, because I do think, um, we're, we're at a point where a, you know, if we continue to move forward, we're, this is what, I want you to understand what we're obligated to.
Well, but that's, I guess, my point. What are you, we're not, all we're talking about is obligating us to a.
I know.
To an architecture.
Yes, I agree, but I think moving forward in the design, we could stop right now. But what FAA has offered us over the next five years to fiscal year 26, when the terminal gets completed, is 20, almost 20.1 million dollars in their, on funding on their side. OAC has offered us a million dollars to help fund, and then our owner's portion would be just shy of $5 million. And so the percentages, I think, speak volumes. FAA's percentage is about 77%, OAC is at 4%, and SWO is at 19%. Oops. And then we go into the air traffic control tower, and again, all we've done is cite this project, so these are estimates of, well, these aren't the estimates, we will get the estimates for the construction. This is kind of our budget, the way I look at it, of what FAA is putting forward to help fund that tower construction. So they're willing to put forth $10 million, $800,000 for the construction of that tower, and then we would have our 10% match of 1.2 million dollars.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Melissa, you and I spoke about the resolution that they'll hear later in the presentation, and just to clarify, later on, you're going to be asking for authorization to submit applications for additional funding?
Right.
And these services for her contract are grant reimbursable to complete the design? So to that extent, the overall funding picture is relevant to the contract that we're considering?
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carnley. You can see in fiscal 24, which is going to start in October, that we will be applying for a lot of these different grants that get us started down the road on this particular project. The reason our local match is higher than what we're normally used to on these projects is because in that terminal, there are areas that are not considered public spaces. And so we, as the sponsor, have to, to bear that cost. One caveat is, as we're going after our grant funding, is these can be very competitive, especially this one that's bolded, it's called Airport Terminal Program, and it's part of the building, the bipartisan infrastructure pot of money, and that is, according to our contacts at FAA, very, very competitive. What, they, they gave us a good outlook because we are shovel ready, or we will be shovel ready by the time we apply for that grant, probably somewhere in the fall of this year. The, the paperwork hasn't come out on it just yet. So we are here this evening with this presentation to approve the architect's contract to complete the design on the terminal, and then later in the agenda where we talk about where we, the resolutions are presented, we will be asking for permission to take fiscal year 24 and apply for the grants that are available to us at this point.
How, so the, the ask on the architect's contract is 1.6, correct? How much of that gets spent before we know whether we get these grants?
I would think, Connie, you want to come up and help me address this, but?
I guess we're, our target is to be.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
People are watching on TV.
Thank you, I know, my brother's watching. We are, we are pushing the team to be done before Christmas. So if you, if you don't, if they don't, we've been told from Christmas 2021 that October was the magic, you know, we need to be done with everything, or at least know what it really costs by October. So my point is, we'll probably be 90, 90% done by the time you know of your grants. And that's just my interpolation of what, when you know, when the grant comes out and when you'll know what. And we go fast, I mean, I'm sorry, that's part of the reason why we got the 2015 contract is because our reputation is for, we do good work, but we also are pretty good managers, and we push a lot of people forward at the same time, so.
Yeah, I mean, my concern though is that we spend 1.6 million dollars and then don't get the grants that we need to get, and, and then we've got a beautiful architecture design for an airport that we can't build. And that, that's my concern is what, where does the money come from then?
Well, that's what I was going to ask Connie, is if there are logical stopping points along the way?
Well, we could do another 30, my contracts are all written with my subconsultants to finish 30% like we did last month, and then take it to ready to bid, ready to, I mean, again, construction manager will be pricing, but really put it out to sub bids right after the first of the year. So we could probably split them out to another percentage, but it'll, it's, I don't know that it's beneficial, I think.
Well, I mean, if you're going to be done by the end of the year with the whole thing, you know, I mean, that's, there's really no, no point in splitting it up.
This is what I always say about the pandemic post-inflation costs, what we're, what we're designing is going to be useful to you, even if you don't get it this year, get it next year. I mean, that's what, that's what we've been, I mean, there's nothing that we're doing that's going to be timestamped, our, except for some of the wall coverings won't be available, or the paint colors will be not that color this year. But basically, we should have something that if you don't get it, it's not, it's not going to go bad before you get it, if you're, if you keep applying for funds.
And so the fees for the architecture design, the continuation of that are coming out of those smaller tranches of the bill grant that is a 90/20 split. So we would be paying our 113,000 and their.
80/20 or 90/10?
Pardon me?
You said 90/20.
Oh, I meant 90/10, so sorry. So 90/10, we would be paying, it's approximately 113,000 and getting the design. I guess at that point, we could stop.
Well, we could, in our contract, we stop anytime you tell us to stop, and we just calculate our hours, but I wanted to say that I've been on all the calls that I, most, almost every call with the FAA, and particularly when the EA cropped up last October, and I was really, what? You know, you want me to stop a team of this many people? I was on the call with them, and they, 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 they don't sound like they're any doubt. I mean, honestly, that they, that's why, when we sent our EAs in for review, we got answers the next day from the FAA. That does not happen. Normally, it's months later. So I have really good fear, I have really good feelings that you're going to get the funding, but again, I can stop whenever you tell me to stop, and my team will stop as well, that's my contract.
We've had very good luck with the FAA and their grant programs, but we're going to have an item agenda here in a second that we learn what happens when the government doesn't do what we expect them to do, so.
I know. Well, I can say that according to our contract, it's very clear, we stop whenever you ask us to.
Okay, thank you.
But we have a large number of people and everybody's ready to go right now, so to finish up. Stay or sit down?
Counselors, for the questions?
Want me to put my drawings back up?
Gary was just reminding me that we do have a commitment for this next tranche of the bill grant, and it's waiting for us to apply, and so we're in the process of making that application.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Again, that's a million dollars.
Okay, so as to this specific agenda item, what is the recommended action?
Recommendation or the motion before you is to approve the amendments to the professional services agreement with McFarland Architects in a total amount not to exceed $1,616,635 to complete the new terminal design at Stillwater Regional Airport.
Thank you, counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations?
We have a motion in a second to accept the staff's recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a little 4 to 0.
Thank you so much.
Very, very excited, don't, I am very optimistic about funding coming from the FAA for this, and getting that wonderful terminal for somewhat less than $5 million bucks on our part is something we have to absolutely go for.
I, I though appreciate your eye to what could happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7D, right, that's where we are? Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding performance-based efficiency contract with JCI and project financing. The city attorney is going to give us an update on current status.
Yes, current status, and to provide an opportunity for the council to discuss, ask questions, and possibly take action related to the Johnson Controls Performance-Based Efficiency Contract and the related project financing. As you know, on April 24, City Council approved a performance contract with JCI to implement performance efficiency measures across municipal facilities, and at the same time also approved financing the project via a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with Bank of America. A term sheet with Bank of America was signed. However, prior to being able to close on that project financing, the state treasurer placed Bank of America on the restricted financial companies list pursuant to the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act. That is new state legislation that provides for a process in which state agencies and, under certain circumstances, political subdivisions are prohibited from contracting with companies that are deemed to boycott the energy industry.
Even if they aren't? Even if they aren't?
So at this time, the, the timing, it, it is a quite frustrating position to be in, because the timing of that publication of the restricted financial companies list was unfortunate. As a result, we're currently on pause. It really is a legal issue, whether the city can proceed with financing the project with Bank of America and comply with state law. At this time, city staff, my office, we're reviewing our options. Absent meaning a specific exemption in the act, we cannot proceed contracting with a restricted financial company. Given that this is new legislation and there's no existing guidance for cities, the city has reached out to both the state treasurer's office and the office of the Attorney General to seek guidance as we continue to evaluate whether or not there's a path forward. But that's where we're at, so wanted to open it up for questions or consideration.
I'll just add some specifics, I mean, I've, I've had conversations with all of our applicable legislators, with the state treasurer, and with several other people at the state level, to try to figure out how this act is supposed to apply to us and what we're supposed to do when it's clearly getting in the way of us doing something that our community needs. The answers have been less than helpful in a lot of ways. I've heard everything from, well, this was never intended to apply to cities in the first place, to, you know, we did get somewhat of a letter from the treasurer's office that says, oh, this transaction doesn't really, shouldn't fall under this, but they also said that banks still had to sign some affidavits to say that they're not discriminatory, and so there's, there's still a lot of unclear hoops, and unfortunately, the City of Stillwater ends up in this situation as the, the test case for how this legislation actually applies in these situations. I've heard from members of state boards who saw that we've been dealing with this issue, and they said that they're also concerned in the funds that they administer in some of these banks, and so it's a, it is a massive problem right now in a lot of other municipalities and other state agencies who deal with finances, and unfortunately, we're sitting in a situation where we're, we're in a lot of limbo that we don't have very much control over. I think, Ms. Carnley, you were waiting, are you still waiting on a response from the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
Have you heard?
I have not received a response. We just might also mention, you know, just again, the timing, our current performance contract had a contract price that was conditioned on the city issuing a notice to proceed by June 14. We have worked with the staff, JCI staff, who have communicated to us that, you know, at this time, they didn't intend to increase the price, and they would at least extend that to July 14 with four days to go, that's probably also an impossible timeline, and no formal contract amendments have been executed. The next best proposal, if we are unable to proceed with financing with Bank of America, would cost the city about 1.2 million dollars more over the term of the financing.
You know, and that brings me to where I am. I have, when we approved this a couple months ago, whenever that was, after interest expenses, there weren't a whole lot of savings that I could see. And now we've added another 1.2 million dollars of interest, and all the savings are gone. Am I misinterpreting that?
Well, certainly, there are options, a change order process in the performance contract could reduce the scope in order to, but again, then the performance guarantee would change, it's kind of a trickle-down effect if we were to change the contract at this point to reduce the scope in order to bear the additional interest costs in the increase in the project cost.
So if we were to cancel this, just walk away, what are, what would happen to the city? What, what's our requirements?
Sure. Basically, level of risk is that the city executed a performance development agreement with Johnson Controls at the inception of the project. If we are, if we do not proceed with implementing the project, Johnson and Controls is entitled to $150,000 for the work that they've already performed on the project.
Well, and then we also have all the work that needs to be done, that we have no avenue for doing that.
And do you mean as in implementing the identified projects? Yeah, and it's also my understanding that staff has, just given that we've come to this legal hurdle, that staff is already just evaluating if there are other avenues to present to council by which we could do these projects. Certainly, might not be possible to do the 13.5 million dollar all at once, but maybe to look at some options, and again, I will defer to staff on that, I'm the lawyer, but I am told there's at least some other avenues in which they could get some of those projects
So, I mean, to me, there's, we've got, the last we got from Johnson Controls was July 14 as a date that we need to decide if we're moving forward or not, is that correct?
Yes, the advisory comment I'll make on that is that there is not a formal performance contract amendment. The performance contract does have a contract price conditioned on issuing the notice to proceed by June 14. There is also equitable adjustment language in the contract that if they have an additional expense in performing, that they shall be equitably adjusted. And so without a contract amendment, we just basically have their commitment to extending the date.
Do you have any sense of when we might have some clarity from state folks on what, how this is supposed to, how, I mean, who's going to end up in trouble if we move forward with it? I mean, other than, I mean, my understanding is that the bank's not willing to move forward with it without additional clarification from the state either.
That's exactly right. It, even if we decide to move forward, Bank of America has to be agreeable to entering the financing transaction, and they've been pretty candid and clear that their position is they will not proceed unless they can do so under the terms of the act.
And since they're already on the list, they don't think they can even sign an affidavit that says they don't discriminate, because the state's already determined that they discriminate.
That's correct, and so.
It's a catch 22 for them.
Right. Basically, our.
So we need to figure out, I mean, to me, we need to figure out how much longer, or what else we have to do if we get something clarity from the state? How much longer can, is Johnson Controls going to be willing to wait around for that clarity from the state so that we can move forward? And if those, if we can't get those dates to match, then, then we're going to have to consider what other. I think we should have staff, I mean, from my perspective, we should certainly have staff working on, how are we going to get these projects done if this, if this doesn't, if we can't get these things to match up? So what's our, what's our Plan B? Because the, you know, we had a citizen committee working on this, we've had lots of input on these projects needing to get done for our community, for, for our, I mean, our facilities need these upgrades, we need a way to be able to pay for them, and so I think we need to be working very diligently now on what is Plan B if, if Plan A doesn't come to fruition.
So Brady, how much of this work do you believe staff could do with everything else staff has to do?
Well, there's, there's different items in that scope, and there were some items in the scope that were removed when the final contract was being created. So I know staff, some of the directors that are in the room have evaluated and were involved in this process, and have belief that. and have belief that we can bring these projects to council and do a phased-in approach. When you're talking about, you know, one point, something million dollars on a budget per year and bringing, you know, a portion of that and committing that as your budget to deferred maintenance projects like the LED projects in our city buildings, our city streets, as well as our city parks that were not included in this project, I believe if the new city management was given that challenge to bring these deferred maintenance projects on a yearly basis, I believe that's a challenge we could do.
So for this $150,000, we did get a document that had a pretty good list of, of projects that would have payback. And like the LED, as I recall, that was the biggest item of potential payback was the LED lights. And so look around the room, we could use LED lights.
Absolutely.
As I look around the building, we can use LED lights. As I look around the city with streetlights, we can use LED lights. So we've got a list of things, and they've, by accident or by plan, have prioritized where the money is. So there's some low-hanging fruit in there I think we should be able to attack.
I agree. I, I believe that staff could bring back work with the committee that worked on this project and, and bring that list of projects to the council and begin to prioritize and set a ranking and start knocking those things off the list.
And some of those have pretty quick payback. Some of them they should be, I can't say should be easy to go through, but there's some really good payback on some of those. And I think of the LEDs for one.
Agreed. All right. Well, it sounds like we're going to continue to try to figure out what we can do with the state. It sounds like the city's going to, the staff's going to try to figure out what our options are. I assume you'll be in contact with JCI to figure out what they're, what, what we're going to do in the limbo time here, which is unfortunate because I know the JCI team has been diligent in, in trying to get these projects done for us as well. And I think they're just as, kind of being hung out to dry here as much as we are, and that's, that's unfortunate. But I appreciate the work that, that city attorney's office has put into it, staff has put into it, and hopefully, we can figure out a positive resolution for, for the whole thing moving forward from the state. And at the very least, we'll get something from staff that helps us figure out how to get some of these projects done.
Yep.
Anything further on that item? All right. It moves us to eight A, Resolution 2023-21. A resolution authorizing the assignment of this Stillwater Regional Airport Ground Lease Agreement between the City of Stillwater and Double C Hangar LLC to Stillwater Flight Center Hangar LLC, and authorizing the city manager to sign related documents necessary for such purpose. Mr. Johnson, you have a little explanation for us on this one?
Well, basically, this is a sale of a hangar, and in the lease is contained an, an option to transfer with permission. And Simmons, who owns that now, Greg Simmons, has requested an assignment of the lease. And I think our option is to approve that since it, we granted the lease, the option in the lease. And Stillwater Flight Center wants to utilize that for overnight hangar space or other uses connected to aeronautical uses.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions, councilors? Is there a motion on the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Takes us to eight B, Resolution 2023-22. This is a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of an application for fiscal year 2024 bipartisan infrastructure law funds administered by the Federal Aviation Administration, and the submission of an application for fiscal year 2024 state funds administered by the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission for infrastructure improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport. I think we got this sufficiently explained in our airport presentation. Any questions, councilors, or is there an action on the item?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, the resolution is adopted. Item eight C is Resolution 2023-23, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program to finance water system improvements, approving professional services agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto. Mr. David Barth is here, and he looks just eager as anything to tell us a little bit about this.
Sure. Good evening, David, uh, councilors. David Barth with the engineering department. There are two resolutions on both the council and SUA agendas this evening for your consideration. The first resolution allows us to make application for a low-interest loan through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund that's administered through OWRB and ODEQ. Again, that's a, it's a federal loan. It's, it's low interest. We've used these before to help us pay for projects. As you've heard me talk about previously, the need is great for the water treatment plant and raw water delivery projects, and so we do need some help financially, and we do that by borrowing money. We've, we've also got other grants and things that we're working on that we've received, like the ARPA money, but we still need additional funds to complete those projects. So that's why we're here to ask you to allow us to apply for the loan. Specifically, this loan will be used for funding part of the finished water pump station project, the new water treatment plant chemical improvements project, and then our some design work on the raw water storage at Lake McMurtry project. The second resolution allows the SUA just to be reimbursed with the loan proceeds from that loan. So with that, I would, if you have any questions?
Counselors, any questions? Thank you, David. Counselors, is there an action on Resolution 2023-23?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of four to zero. And item eight D is the second resolution that David spoke about, Resolution 2023-24, a resolution stating Stillwater Utilities Authority's intent to reimburse capital expenditures. Counselors?
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-24.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, Resolution 2023-24 is adopted. Item nine is ordinances. On first reading, we have ordinance 3524, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1017 and 1109 West 9th Avenue, 1022, 1024, 1104, 1110, 1122, and 1124 West 10th Avenue, and 920 through 924 South Jefferson Street from small lot, single-family residential to two-family residential district. This is an item discussed at a prior city council meeting. Is there action on the ordinance?
Move to advance ordinance 3524 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 20, excuse me, ordinance 3524 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3523, an ordinance closing a portion of the 16-foot water easement of Lot 3, Block 2, the Sticks, in addition to the City of Stillwater, Payne County, Oklahoma, near property address as 119 East Tyler Avenue. Counselors?
Move to adopt ordinance 3523.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3523 is now adopted. That takes us to reports from the officers and the boards. Ms. Carnley, you done speaking for the evening?
Out of words.
Brady?
Yes. Mayor, please save the dates, July 19th through the 23rd, for crazy days. As you noticed, there were some buttons here. I think we were supposed to be wearing these. It's my fault that I didn't have you all put them on, but.
Put them on right now.
Yeah, we have crazy days buttons here. So this is Stillwater's annual largest community-wide retail sales event. From Lake Viewpoint Pioneer Square Shopping Centers to the Strip and to downtown, there's so many shops offering summertime sales for all ages. These are sidewalk sales. There's some racks located inside, so definitely visit some of your favorite stores here in Stillwater. For the full list of participating businesses, go to visitstillwater.org.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counselor Hawkins?
Oklahoma in July is hot, and we have two free splash pads and a public swimming pool to help keep you cooled off. The splash pads are located at Boomer Lake Park and Southern Woods. Both are open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Our swimming pool is located in Couch Park and is only closed on Sunday and Mondays for maintenance. For more information about our water play areas, go to stillwater.org. Also, please be mindful of your pets and how much time they spend outside. Let's keep them healthy with plenty of water and shaded areas. If needed, if needing more information on how to keep your pets safe and healthy during hot months and other times throughout the year, please contact the Stillwater Animal Welfare. You can follow them on Facebook for helpful tips, adoption opportunities, and more.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
The city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on various committees, including the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission. These committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. If you would like to get involved in your local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information and to apply online, go to stillwater.org/citizenboards.
Thank you, counsel. As we discussed earlier this evening, the Board of Adjustment is a very important part of making decisions about where things go in our community. So please take a look at those opportunities and get involved. Counselor Harden?
Mark your calendars for Oklahoma Tax Free Holiday Weekend, August 4th through 6th. During this time, sales of eligible items are exempt from sales tax, state, city, county, and local municipality sales tax. Retailers are required to participate in this three-day tax holiday and may not collect sales and use tax on qualified footwear and clothing items priced less than $100. We ask that our community members please shop local and take advantage of this savings weekend here in Stillwater. For more information about the holiday, to find a list of exempt items, go to tax.ok.gov.
It's a good reminder. Thank you so much. I will let you all know that the police department, Stillwater Police Department, will host the National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Southern Woods Park. This is an annual community-building opportunity for Stillwater families, friends, emergency responders, and other organizations to strengthen crime prevention awareness. There will be games, food, and fun, so please save the date, and we hope to see everyone at the event. This is a ton of fun. There's always trucks and, and officers and all kinds of cool things to do. Kids, my kids have really enjoyed it in the past. They're getting a little, a little old to be enthralled by a fire truck, but it's still a lot of fun. I also want to make sure we give plenty of thanks to Stephanie Kinder, Barb Bliss, and Tiffany Horton with the Community Resources, our Police, Fire, and Emergency Management, Public Works, Waste Management, Electric, Water, Communications, Engineering, and many, many volunteers for making this annual event safe and successful. These folks are also a big part of Boomer Blast, which came off this last week. We appreciate all of the collaboration and genuine service of the folks who, who put that together as well. So thanks to everyone for all of the cool events that we get to, get to see in our community. If there's no further reports, is there a motion to adjourn the city council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn city council. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. Anybody need a break, or we're going to jump in?
Just go.
Go for it.
All right. I think we will move to Stillwater Utilities Authority next. I will call this meeting to order. The Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for July 10th, 2023. First up is our consent docket. Questions, comments, or motion on the consent docket?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the SUA consent docket is approved. On general orders, we have item A, five A, consider approval of task order one and related expenditures include engineering, testing, potholing, permitting, and easements under master services agreement with Bancroft International for the hub sewer line connection project. Ms. Staring. Candy, I say Staring. Is it Staring or Starring?
It's Staring, but I'll answer to both.
No, I'm going to say Staring. I'm sorry.
She walked away. I thought I was wrong.
Every time I say that, I thought it was Staring.
She's a star.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
I'll remember it now.
It's a normal mistake. Normal mispronunciation. So I am here tonight, again, Candy Staring, Director of Engineering, nice to see everybody again, trustees this time, to present about the Hub Entertainment Center, a location that's southeast of Airport and, I just blocked up.
Perkins.
Perkins, thank you. So this, if you haven't, I know everybody here has heard about it, but there may be some viewers at home who haven't. And so I've got a list here of all the news sources that you can easily search on Google and find a great article about this 60,000-square-foot entertainment center that is coming to our city. It's going to include pickleball, arcade, food, and other fun stuff for families and friends. The issue is that we have been asked in a partnership to help extend the sewer from their location to our public main because the development they're settling in has a bit of a gap and cannot drain. So we are partnering with them to do this. We have a task order identified with the old Keystone, the new Bancroft, that was also on another agenda item tonight for a master services agreement. They're going to look at two alternatives, and it may look real simple to connect these dots, but because of the depth and the cover that's required on a state highway and the elevations of the lines and some other things, it's probably going to be a little bit bigger of a project. And so Bancroft is going to look at a couple of different alternatives for us, and they just drew out. And we've heard different things about that pink line, and we'll have to investigate that to determine whether or not it's really usable or not. But the task order includes design bidding, construction, and the construction phase services are all included in task order one for a, an amount that will, within contingency, is going to be less than $25,645. Is there any questions about this?
Trustees? Just to be clear, this is the engineering cost to determine where the line's going to go. Do we have any sense at this point of what we think this is?
Just those two options are what we've been presented with, and I can't, we're not leaning towards one or the other. We're going to evaluate them based on cost benefit and do what's best for the city.
How much do you think this is going to cost us to build?
No pressure.
Ballpark it.
With, with the route unspecified and undesigned.
Three or 400,000.
Okay. All right. That's one of the, the big numbers, round numbers.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Ms. Staring? Is there action on the item?
Staff recommends a motion to authorize expenditures associated with task order number one to the MSA with Bancroft to include engineering, testing, potholing, permitting, easements, and a 15% overall contingency for total project expenditures of $25,645. Authorize the general manager to execute task order number one and approve a budget amendment authorizing the use of $25,645 from the sewer fund.
Trustees?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the, or excuse me, to approve the order, to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. Getting all kinds of ahead of myself here. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Item six A is Resolution, Resolution SUA 2023-4. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for financial assistance through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program to finance water system improvements, approving professional services agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto. This is the sister provision of the resolution we adopted as the council. Questions, comments, or action?
Motion to adopt SUA-2023-4.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Item is approved with a vote of four to zero. And the next item is Resolution SUA 2023-5, a resolution stating Stillwater Utility Authority's intent to reimburse capital expenditures. Trustees?
Move to adopt Resolution 2023-5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Resolution SUA 2023-5 is adopted. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the July 10th, 2023, meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Trustees, questions, comments, or motion on the consent docket?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion and a second on consent. Please vote. Please vote. Oops. That's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 5, general orders, 5A, and all of these are going to be pretty related, and Mr. Moore is going to give us introduction to all of them, but we'll start with 5A, consider application of Eskimo Joe's, Inc. for a small business enhancement assistance in the amount of $15,000 for improvements to include new fencing for property appearance at 501 West Elm and 419 West Elm. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In just a moment, I'll ask Robert Williams to come to the podium. He can tell you more about the project, and you can ask him questions. Just as a reminder, since we have six of these items on the agenda tonight, and it's been a few minutes since we brought one of these to you all, so a small business enhancement is lined out in our implementation policy guide for our downtown TIF 3 district. These are those 15, up to $15,000 max with a 50% match, so a $30,000 project could have an up to $15,000. It specifically calls out that within the increment district, these are on projects that enhance the exterior of the structure to the existing business that is located there, otherwise to improve the appearance or the exterior of the business. So it's very tied to these exterior enhancements. The first item up tonight is for Eskimo Joe's. The project address is at 501 West Elm and 419 West Elm. This project has a total cost of $35,252.80, so again, the total amount being requested is that $15,000 max. The first three items, just to give a little context to the first three items, are owned by Clark Realty Corp. In the TIF meeting that was held previously, it was asked of Robert Williams if there was an individual lease for each of these properties, and that is correct. So each property that you're seeing tonight, these first three items, are leased separately by the separate entities of Stan Clark. So the first one is Eskimo Joe's. This is for new fencing for the property appearance at 501 West Elm and 419 West Elm. So with that, I'll let Robert Williams come and answer questions.
Thank you for your consideration in this matter. We are requesting these for property appearances at all of our area lots. We do feel like Elm Street is an entrance to OSU and has a very high-impact traffic area to OSU and to, there's a lot of visitors that obviously come into town. We're very blessed and grateful for all of that. We also have the new convention center that's going to be located next door to us that, again, will bring in additional visitors, and so we're just trying to, we'll keep up with those guys in a way, because that's going to be a pretty nice property as well. And our area is a little bit rundown. Any questions?
Trustees, any questions? We certainly appreciate the effort to maintain that entrance to the community along Elm Street, so we appreciate the fact that you guys are doing these projects. All right. Counselors, the first item is, somewhere, is to consider the application for the property at 501 West Elm and 419 West Elm, CEDIS 23-11. Questions, comments, or action on the item?
Motion to approve, CEDIS 23-11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item B is the application for $15,000 grant on 516 West Elm and 512 West Elm. Is there, are there questions or action on this item?
Motion to approve, CEDIS 23-12. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. That one's also approved, four to zero. And Item C is to consider an application for small business enhancement in the amount of $8,212 for new fencing at 416 West Elm, CEDIS 23-13. Action on this item?
Motion to approve, CEDIS 23-13.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Vote of four to zero, that is also approved. All right. Item D is to consider the application of pro-value net for small business enhancement assistance in the amount of $37,500, $3,750 for improvements to include new windows, doors, decals, trims, repair outdoor digital screen, new paint, and flower beds at 801 South Main. Mr. Moore?
Yes, so we have Katie Bean here tonight that's going to come to the podium and tell you more about the project. This is for pro-value net there at 8th and Main. As you just read, this is for a variety of exterior improvements at her business.
Hello. Yeah, basically, we have a very prominent corner in downtown, so we just want to make sure we can do some major improvements there as far as all the outside facade to really keep contributing to the downtown area.
Excellent. And again, thank you guys for your willingness to maintain the look and feel of our community by doing these kinds of projects. We appreciate it. Trustees, any questions? Is there an action on the application?
Keeping with the momentum, motion to approve, CEDIS 23-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Please vote. It's approved, four to zero. Thank you. Item E, consider the application of Finnegan's Pub for small business enhancement assistance in the amount of $5,000 for improvements to include a new 8-by-40 fence sidewalk cafe and two lighted signs at 704 South Main. Mr. Moore?
Yes, this is exciting for one of our downtown businesses to be reopening. They're at another prominent corner of our downtown at 7th and Main. Chris Ward is here tonight with Finnegan's Pub. He's going to talk about, he's got, in this application for the exterior improvements, he's got two custom signs, bar pub signs, that are going to give a really nice look to downtown as well as an outdoor seating area in that kind of wide sidewalk that he has in front of his business. So the total project, he has $10,029, or $29.26, and he's asked for $5,000 on this request. So go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. So Finnegan's Pub was open previously in downtown Stillwater for almost 11 years, and so we're excited to be reopening at a new location that we actually own this time, and part of that is that prominent corner. We really like that. We're excited to work with the bicycling community, and so part of the fencing project that we're going to do will also double as a place for people to tie up their bikes to at those events. And then as far as the signage goes, our outdoor area was very, very successful in the previous iteration, so we're looking forward to enhancing that and having a really good look with it. I've seen some progress pictures on the signage, and we're really, really excited about them.
That's awesome. We're excited about you guys being back downtown. That's a place that a lot of people have missed for the last couple of years, so we're excited to see you making that progress. Trustees, motion on the item?
What's the timeframe for getting open?
So Health Department comes and looks at us on Thursday. She has conditionally approved us, as long as she doesn't find anything else that I need to do. The outdoor seating area, the fencing, I could build that in one day if I get the approval. Other than that, it's state liquor license, and that mews at the speed of government, so it's however long the state takes. But I was told by Able Commission when I talked to them before, six to eight weeks, I think it's going to move faster than that now, though, because the entire process is electronic. I don't have to hand-deliver everything down to them. I can start turning things in now, and so that's my intention, hopefully very soon.
And just to verify, and I know I saw this in the documents, but just to make this public comment, the outdoor seating, everything around that, will remain ADA accessible, the sidewalk?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Trustees, is there action on the item?
Carrying on. Move to approve, is it approve or accept?
Approve.
Approve. CEDIS 23-15. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Please vote. It's approved, four to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And Item F is to consider the application of CNG Hospitality LLC doing business at Coney Island, Stillwater, for small business enhancement assistance in the amount of $15,000 for improvements to include an entertainment venue with covered stage, full-service bar, and covered seating at 301 South Washington Street. Mr. Moore?
Yes, this is for Coney Island, one of our classic staples on the Strip there on Washington Street. Jake Humphries is here tonight to talk about the project. The total project cost on this one is $57,600, and again, looking to add a nice exterior improvement that is going to help increase some business and some entertainment down on the Strip. So go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, so what we want to do is create an outdoor music venue there on the Strip that is focused on being a family-friendly environment, since Coney's been around for as long as it has been, specifically on game days and when the weather starts getting warmer in the spring, to allow us to have an outdoor music venue that has covered seating that is open to all ages. We specifically want to really push this towards the community, allowing them to have more of an opportunity to take over the Strip. I know it's mostly focused on the students, so we want to give them an opportunity to kind of take a piece of that back that's open to family, kids, and the whole environment.
All right. Trustees, questions?
Where is this going to be?
The parking lot between Coney and Fuzzy's.
This is better than having the parking there?
Yeah, I was here for the parking meeting a couple months ago, and the parking just never really developed the way we wanted it to, and so we see it more of a revenue base and something that we can really help the customers out and give them more of an opportunity than just what's already there.
Okay. Trustees, action on the item?
Carrying on. Move to approve, CEDIS 23-16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Please vote. Approved with a vote of...
Nope.
Four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to all these improvements. These are all really exciting projects. We really do appreciate our business owners in town who are taking advantage of these programs. This is a really, I think, valuable program of, as part of our economic development to make sure these kinds of projects can happen, so I'm excited about all that. Any reports from the officers and board? Is there a motion to adjourn the CEDIS?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the CEDIS meeting. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we're now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.